In compliance with Check of 231 Public Law 1975 and Title of Public Meeting Act, adequate notice of this meeting as specified in the act, proper notice of this meeting as provided in the notice of January 7, 2013. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education office, mailed to the Nutley Sun, the Star-Ledgers, and the New Jersey Herald, the Nutley Journal, mailed to the County Council Clerk, advertised on Nutley Sun on January 17, 2013, and posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. In consideration of all here present and in recognition of the importance of these proceedings, it is requested that all cellphones and pagers be turned off for silence for the duration of the meeting. Have a flag salute this time?
Congratulations. The United States of America, and a true republic for all its fans, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Approval, Mrs. Proudie?
Mrs. Danjek-Martin?
Here.
Ms. Flynn?
Here.
Ms. Flynn?
Here.
Ms. Whitfield?
Here.
Dr. B?
Here.
Ms. Russo?
Here.
Ms. Soler?
Here.
Ms. Sazada?
Here.
Ms. Sinski?
Here.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes?
Makes motion of the gentleman as distributed?
Time needs to put for second.
Second.
That corresponds, I'm sorry, all in favor of the approval of the minutes?
Aye.
Thank you. Corresponds?
No.
No. At this time, we're going to recognize Mr. Joe Pyro.
We recognize the athlete, it's not there.
I'm just kidding. Then he's going to be recognized.
Pretty recognizable.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. Tonight, we're going to honor some of our fall athletes for some fantastic accomplishments during the fall season and their SCC honors. When you make an SCC team, you're the best of the best in Essex County, which arguably is one of the best counties for high school athletics. We've had some great representation this year from all of our sports, and more importantly, I say this every time I get up here, we have some great athletes that are great student athletes, great representatives of the building and the community, and they're really, the young ladies and young men you're going to meet tonight are the whole package, and athletics is just a little bit of what makes them so special. So, without further ado, I'm going to bring up, I'm going to start to bring up the boys' soccer team at first. This young man had a great season and was a very integral part of our success. First team, all-conference SCC Liberty Division, Mr. Adam Steck. Congratulations, Adam, great job.
Thank you.
First team, all SCC Liberty Division, Mr. Nick Brancotta. Hey, Nick, thank you very much. Good job.
Thanks.
First team, all SCC Liberty Division, Mr. Michael Diaches. Translations? Good job. I don't believe he's here this evening, but we'll recognize him as well. For second team, Liberty Division, Asuki Amamora. Asuki, here. Second team, all SCC Liberty Division, Mr. Vincent Scallion. An honorable mention for boys' soccer in the Liberty Division, Mr. Nick Faraco. Second team in the Liberty Division, Mr. Charlie Biggum. Moving on to the girls, first team Liberty Division, Shereen Abilene. First team in the Liberty Division, Ms. Victoria Keely. Natalie could not make it tonight for another commitment. Our first team in the Liberty Division, Ms. Natalie Malillo. Second team in the Liberty Division, Ms. Brittany Curry. Second team in the Liberty Division, Ms. Allison Zaire. Also second team, Blair can't be here tonight because she's at a basketball game, is Blair An honorable mention for the Liberty Division, Kelly Hugel, accepting that would be her Moving on to volleyball, first team in the American Division, for girls' volleyball, Second team in the American Division, is Molly Demguard. An honorable mention for girls' volleyball in the American Division, Kelly Nicherow. Girls' cross-country, first team Liberty Division, is Ann-Margre Conker. First team in the Liberty Division, is Hejo Ahn. Second team in the Liberty Division, Ms. Catherine O'Connell. Second team in the Liberty Division, Yoko Okabe. An honorable mention in the Liberty Division, April Plekak. Boys' cross-country, all-conference SCC, second team Liberty Division, Owen O'Connor. Honorable mention in the Liberty Division for cross-country, Yevak Jani. SCC first team, American Division, football, Sal Gabriel. Congratulations. I don't believe he's here tonight, but first team, the American Division, for football, Second team in the American Division for football, Peter Burbach. Second team in the American Division for football, Joel Ainetti. An honorable mention in, for football, American Division, Will Pow. Again, I'd like to congratulate all of our recipients, congratulate their parents, thank their parents for all their hard work and their dedication. I know it's not easy being an athletic parent. If you've noticed, you heard me say "American Division" an awful lot tonight, and that proves that our programs are getting better and better each year, that we're up in the American Division where we want to be, and we're having great successes there. So again, I congratulate everybody on behalf of the Board of Education, Superintendent Ms. Lazovic, these are, should be elite, they're elite, so congratulate them. On behalf of the Board of Education, we certainly congratulate the athletes and the parents. We all know what you go through as parents and appreciate the job you're doing with your children, and again, athletes, great job, thank you very much. The board will take a couple minutes just to congratulate all of you, because I know you don't want to stay for our board meeting, but you're welcome to. And if you'd like to leave, we'll shake some hands and then you can be on your way. Okay? Thank you. All right, at this time, we'll hear from the superintendent, Mr. Lazovic. Okay, thank you, Tom.
That's right. If only. All right, just some quick updates, I know we had a packed meeting in the retreat, we're immediately following, so I just want to touch on the public knowledge again. Just to reconfirm that we get questions about calendars, especially the graduation schedule. All of our updated and border-proofened calendars are on every webpage within the Nutley Schools that are working in Maine. If you go up to the top on the banner and click on the calendar now, it doesn't just take you to the main calendar, it lists all the separate documents that are border-proofed. So anyone looking for any of that information that hasn't updated, it will always be on that, on the website. Moving to academics. Just to update the board again, some things have happened since our last meetings. The math pilot continues, there was a meeting even this afternoon. We're finalizing selections of math series so we can acquire the appropriate materials to start the training and again, implement the piling portion. We're still on our timeline and looking forward to making decisions so that next September we can get new materials in every classroom in K-6, if not K-12, and make sure the appropriate training is available for teachers so we can slowly implement new philosophy. Difficult and talented. Ms. Valani and I met with Mrs. Appolitano, you know, fairly regular basis. Again, our mission, going back to last year, was to create a fully comprehensive program to support difficult students throughout the school day. It's always been our goal, again, just to reiterate, we discussed the components that we have, but the fact that these components do not add up to a full, rich, and appropriate program to ensure that all instructional time is maximized. We also talked about the most efficient and effective way to provide a comprehensive program, and just want to reiterate, as we move forward, again, we have conversations at the board level, committee level, and we'll certainly meet with parents, have dialogue with parents prior to making any changes for the coming year. An update on our Panasonic consortium. This Friday, I and two of our staff members will be visiting Pemberton High School, which is the next stop on our rotation, again, nothing will be up either sometime late this year or early next year from the foundation, and we get a lot of great feedback, again, as we always give, it's about time we received. Our language arts training, we've had two full sessions, I believe our next one is this Thursday. Again, the goal is to implement pieces of the workshop philosophy in our Tier One classes, those classes in every case of the building that were highlighted during this school year. Continue training for a fuller implementation in September, as well as over the summer, select and train Tier Two teachers so we continue to roll out in one more classroom. We're going to involve the purchase of robust materials for every basic classroom, whether it's Tier One, Two, or Three, to ensure that we have the appropriate resources that our teachers can take advantage of. Evaluation, two big steps forward. The first is our principal or administrative evaluation tool. We had a two-day, all-day training led by McCrell trainer, Mel Sossman, last Thursday and Friday, every administrator in the district attended. We explored the state-approved framework and process, and we're following this up with an internal training this Thursday, we continue moving forward. There are tweaks that we are allowed to and have to make, and our goal this year is to use the system almost as a pilot with every administrator for their observations, their reflections, and their sum of evaluations, and avoid any possible pings, and be completely prepared for our admin retreat in August, and the full rollout implementation of this beginning next school year through September. As far as our certified staff evaluation tool, we received an update today from the Department of Education, which actually has shared with both the AAN and applicable administrators. There are a number of things that we are now officially required to do for next year. That will be in board brief for the board, you can read through that, but we'll be moving through that as appropriate. One of the things I do want to point out is that they take a good section of the update to talk about the pilot districts, and we are at least as far ahead as the pilot district, which means we're a good two years ahead of anyone in any non-pilot district, so it's over 600 of them. In that sense, our faculty and administrators have been able to work with our selected framework for two more years and continue to work on the kings before. A lot of these things are tightened up by the state requirements kind of falling into place. A great deal has to do with reporting. We'll be working, Mr. Levine, Mr. Vea Meister, and Ms. Valani, to make sure that we're up to date with that, but the state's been taking steps to move in this direction for these two to three years, and things are finally coming forward, while we're sure that we are prepared. My goal is to focus both with the association and with our administrators to make sure that we're all aware of what the state's requiring, and maintain our district focus on the three goals, which are growth, learning, and accountability. Long-range facilities planning committee, another update, I speak with Mr. Dr. Haber again, he is conducting his building visits this week and next as well. I set up an initial meeting with the architect to make sure that he would be here and we could start logging through buildings to get specific recommendations for the district as far as what they feel our needs and our possibilities are within our facilities as we continue to face the shortage of space. In preparation, we talked about, as part of our goals for my summer, I've been meeting with principals and coordinators to go over the admin data reports that they're going to have to present to the academic committee and then to the full board. It's definitely a change, one of the, by our veteran administrators, the focus is on student performance data in any kind, any form that we have, using performance matters to manipulate the data so we can ask specific questions and present those questions in our findings, as well as the plans moving forward, which are data-based to the Board of Education. Instructional rounds, we've moved into the second phase of our instructional rounds planning. Each building has their team, they've come up with their problem of practice and their look for us. The high school will be our first host of school, that we host, I believe, Lincoln School, which will be happening in mid-Fbruary, which is not only a great step forward for our instructional round speech, but it's a great preparation for the high school, which will be undergoing middle states, first full week of it. Couple of updates, Q-SAC, our district improvement plan was finally approved after the state had lost it a few times. We resent it four, four times at this point. It's been approved, and we set up our progress meeting for early July, at which point we have to prove the county that, or the state, that we're meeting the benchmarks based on our initial failure of the Q-SAC. Our NCLB, two major pieces came in, thank Ms. Valani. Back and forth, our comparability report for 2012-13 school year, we've completed the revisions and completed our carryover budgets. The big ones for the board, though, I do want to update you, we talked about the issues we've had with our Title One performance report and how we would possibly deny based on numbers. Ms. Valani and I have been on the phone numerous times with the steer gentleman who runs this at the state, and I'm happy to report that at this point now, based on different directions from the state, our numbers match, and we will be receiving everything that we were initially entitled to, especially from Ms. Valani, we've been achieving through that report half a dozen times minimum, but I can tell you now, at this point, the numbers are correct, and this is a change for us, but, and based on the accuracy, we receive approval for that as well, and chief approval for that, so that's the last piece, which I want to talk about again, as we talk about a K-12 guidance program where we're interacting with stakeholders, especially parents, and trying to set a long-term focus for our kids. We had our eighth grade scheduling meeting here at those schools. Ms. Devilio, Mr. Fortright, as well as a number of others, speaking with parents about how the scheduling process works, and how to make sure that your students are set up as best to achieve their goals when it comes to non-high school.
Thank you, Mr. Lazovic. I don't believe there's a board secretary's report, I don't believe there's a students' report, so we're going to go right into the presentation of Dr. Bernard Maxx from the New Jersey School Board Association, our field representative. Ms. Maxx.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Bernard Maxx, I'm the field service representative of the New Jersey School Board. I'm a major school representative from Lawrence County, Essex County, and Hudson County, and a couple of other outlier districts outside those three counties. Up until now, if anyone's from school boards has come and spoken with you, either on ethics or any other topic, it was either Paul Reed, Sue McCusker, or Joanne Lorrie. Right, well, Sue and Joanne retired back in July, okay? And Paul left school boards and now works for the University of Phoenix, so I mentioned all three, because they usually cover those three counts. Now, I've brought you tonight to discuss with you and go over review of the Code of Ethics, which tonight we're all going to raise our hand and do the ethics pledge. I just wanted to share with you something about myself. I stand in front of you as a former superintendent of schools. Therefore, my position with school boards and working with specific, let's say, your Board of Education, is that the perspective I have as a superintendent, former superintendent of schools, is I understand the day-to-day micro operations of way a school district runs, K-12. Also at a regional level, also at the K-6 and at the K-8 level, but in this case, K-12. Okay? I started teaching in 1975, and from there, teacher, supervisor, vice principal, principal, director, president, superintendent. So that means that in all the meetings I went to, and sometimes some meetings well past midnight in some school districts as a central office administrator, I understand the relationship between the Board of Education and its superintendent of schools and school business administrator, at the same time, the relationship between these people, that office, and you as board members. And so therefore, my perspective on this is to understand that what you are actually doing as a board member, to me, because I truly believe this, is that you are here for altruistic reasons. For some reason, you believe that in your personal and professional life, you have more time in 24 hours a day, and you have said, you know what, there's something about me that you need, that I think that I can give to the students of the Nutley School District. I mean, whatever contributions I'm going to make, it means that for every year I sit on the Board of Education, at graduation, or at the end of that school year, it's a better school district that serves kids even better because I sit on the Board of Education. Because your sole and only purpose, which is different than your goal, your sole and only purpose as a board member is to make sure that whatever decision is made by the Board of Education, it's about kids. There shouldn't be a single thing in the agenda of a board, in a board's agenda, to where it should be no surprise to the superintendent, to the VA, or even to the board president, for you to raise your hand, and say, Mr. Reed raises his hand and says, before I go on this, what's in it for the kids? There isn't a single thing on agenda that at some point isn't time to check. There isn't. Because if there were no students, you wouldn't be here. If there were no students, there'd be no schools, there'd be no students, there'd be no money, there'd be no students, there'd be no staff. We only come here because the kids show up. So therefore, every decision you make as a board member, I believe, is that your purpose is for the benefit of the student setting so they can learn the three things, because it's real easy when you really break it down to what the role of a school district is. Is to teach the kids the language of letters, the language of numbers, and the language of civility. That's it. And if you can get them to aspire, to understand the thirst for learning in the language of letters, the language of numbers, and the language of civility, you're going to have great kids who become great adults, more productive citizens in society. That's the job. And when something happens, K-8, when something happens in elementary schools, and something happens in this middle school that's really great, it will only make Nutley High School that much better. And I say that for this reason, because I shared this last night. One of the great things about being a K-12 district is that you get them when you start in kindergarten and you get to watch them leave as seniors. They're yours all 13 years. You can hold on to them, you can embrace them, you can shape them, you can mold them, and when they leave, they're a senior, that's a Nutley kid, that's a Nutley graduate. With K-6 and K-8 school districts, they don't have high schools. Now, that means they're really putting their energies to those children of K-6 and K-8, because if it doesn't happen, K-8, it doesn't happen in the high schools. Kids just don't get smart when they walk in the door as teenagers. Something happened, K-8, that makes them go into the high school for a thirst for learning, a thirst to do things. You saw this evidence tonight in the sports recognition. I'm sure you have the same thing in terms of academic recognition, and at the same time, staff members as individuals, and what they do to become great at what they do. But the thing that's different about K-6 and K-8 school districts, even though you're not one of those, is that they never get to see the kids in the finished product, because there's no high school. So they got to do their best from the K-6 to the K-8 to send them off probably to another zip code, and hope that they survive up there and they become, but then when they graduate, they're not kids from that early school district, they're kids from a regional school district, usually. But in Nutley, with your tradition and all the years you've been here, as a school district and what you serve in this county, you are recognized as a fine school district, you're recognized as a school district that does good things and makes good things great. And so therefore, your only charge, your only purpose, is what you're doing as a board member in terms of children. Now, the goal of a board member is on two things, supposed to evaluate the superintendent, and you're supposed to govern with great effectiveness. You're a governing body, you're an elected body, to where you represent the constituency of the Nutley community. You represent the community in the best interest of what's going on in your school district. So even though your goal is to observe, is to evaluate the superintendent, and is to govern with great effectiveness, in whatever manner that may be, the purpose is about what are you doing in the best interest of children. Okay? Now, one of the ways to do that is to understand the Code of Ethics, so I have some looking for you in terms of packets, but before I do this, how many of you are first-term first-year board members? One, okay. Anybody in their second term? Third?
Sure.
How about me?
I had a four, continue. I had 15 the first time, and I won my third the second time.
Oh, my lord, okay.
I think my wife said those same words.
As a first-year board, again, just you pound away in 24 hours a day. And, Mr. Flynn, this is your first year new, new elected board member.
Second.
Okay, have you, do you know about the governance one training that you need to do? Did you do it online, or are you going on to Mountain Lakes on River Side?
No, I couldn't do Mountain Lakes.
Okay, you can do it online, and you can go Mountain Lakes. There's also going to be an all-weekend one, a Friday, Saturday, in March.
Yeah.
I think so, yeah, down at the forest, down at Lake Tonsay. I'm going to say this, even though we're in a call session here, the online is good. I don't like the online, because you can't raise your hand and ask a question. Okay? So it's a real good primer, it still counts, it works for you, fantastic, but if you want to really go into one that really gets into being in a setting where it's all new board members, that, you know, you spent a whole solid day, assuming the rest of those, it counts, but those are even better. Okay, all right. I have some packets for you as board members, and I have one housekeeping tool. So you operate as committees, or committee of the whole?
Committees.
Committees, okay, because I need to know that when I go through this thing. And make sure that every board member has, all board members here?
Yes.
All right. How much time are you going to be?
You've got five minutes.
That's okay.
No, we're fine, we're okay. We're going into a retreat, a retreat after this.
Okay. No, that's okay. I was really worried where they had to, done the oath before I got there, or something like that, so just tell someone that you think that we don't know. This is a housekeeping thing we've got to do. I'm going to give this first sheet, is it Mrs. Martin?
Yeah, Danjek-Martin.
Danjek-Martin. What this is, this is a census sheet, just check your name, see if the information is correct. If it's incorrect, force it out, put the right information in. If it's okay, just write okay. Okay, something, all right? Because I'm going to lead with this, okay? And below your name, and this also includes the business coordinator, secretary, and visitor, board of directors, okay? Underneath your name, for example, you'll see GOV 1, 2, 3, and 4, so, for example... Was Lisa, right?
Yeah.
Okay. You've done GOV 1, you've done GOV 2. You still have to do 3 and 4.
Correct.
Okay, so that means that if that's accurate, right on outside, the GOVs, just okay, so that means we're right.
All right.
And then just like, pass it right down, I'll pass, I'll pick it up.
All right, thank you.
All right. What I'd like you to do with board members, we're going to go on the right side. Now, you have some handouts. The first one on the right side says that Debbie does it, all right? The second sheet is eight traits. And the fourth sheet is sampling and field doses. Just take those four and put them aside or underneath your folder, okay? I'm going to punch, punch on those at the end. All right. You're now looking at a sheet that says agenda. We're going to make sure that before, by the time I leave, you understand the relationship of ethics to CUSAC, the code of ethics, ethical and responsible board member practices, and any question that you may have, okay? During the workshop, we will review the board's responsibilities under CUSAC, test their knowledge of the code of ethics, and determine how to serve an ethical and responsible man. You all know what CUSAC is? Have you all been, as a verb, CUSAC? When did it happen? How's she doing? You have your homework. You have some homework. I didn't want to assume what I heard before was linked to that, that's why I asked. Okay. So you understand that in the code of ethics relative to, in the DPR under governance, there was an item there related to ethics. So therefore, whereas the board member on the standing committee, they acknowledge to the county superintendent, whoever was questioning that section of the DPR, that you are aware that the code of ethics is a responsibility and is no less taken. That's it. All right, next sheet. The code of ethics, kind of like an ivory-colored sheet. It's also in your agenda, but let's stay with this sheet. There are 10 tenants, there are 10 principles, there are 10 commandments in the code of ethics for board members. And you must take this code because this is a legal responsibility on your part. And so on this sheet, it goes from A to J. So we're going to start with Mr. Klein, and he's going to read A, and we're going to go through all the way down for all the board members, and since there's 10, we're going to have Mr. Klein read the 10, since he's good. So read the verse. He's reading for everybody, so we're doing the code now. We're doing the ethics code, ahead.
I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the state or the administration where court orders pertaining to schools desire changes should be done by only the legal and ethical procedures.
Okay?
I will make decisions in terms of the education, childcare of children. I will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing.
Mr. Siller.
I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and phrasing. And I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by the...
Mr. Rosen.
I will carry out my responsibility, not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run.
I will recognize that authority rests with the board of education, and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board.
Mr. Sada.
I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups, or to use the school for personal gain or for gain of friends.
Mr. Lieutenant.
I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which if disclosed would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for the schools.
Mr. Reed.
I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer.
Mr. Cheff, Morton.
I will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duty.
Mr. Edmond, Morton.
I will refer all complaints and chief administrative officers to the public views only after failure of administrative service.
Okay. So now that you've gone through the 10 commandments, the 10 principles, the 10 tenants in the code of ethics, you don't have a whole lot of leeway as a board member. You just don't. So from this point on, you have to understand that when you, when people ask you if you're a member of the board, your answer is yes, because you are not a board member, you're a member of the board. Board members act alone. Board members act as Lone Rangers. Board members act and speak as if they are representing the opinion of the board. Members of the board are people who have agreed to sit together to make a decision, some type of vote is taken, and then based upon that decision by majority of the board, then the support is given to that position by the members of the board. So it's real simple, that even though we'll go through a couple of the things here, innately, as a board, as a member of the board, if you're in a position where you're being approached by someone, it doesn't make a difference who it is, and you think for that microsecond maybe you shouldn't answer, you're probably right. Because inside, that's saying to you, I don't want to create a code issue here. Okay? I'll give you an example. You're in the shop right here on Franklin Street, Franklin, Franklin Avenue, and you're over there, and you're getting some salad or whatever, and someone comes up to you and says, "Mr. Reed, are you a..." Well, actually, as I said, Mr. Reed says, "Are you a board member?" And you say, "Well, actually, yes, I am here in Nutley." And say, "Well, you know what? My child goes to the middle school, and we think the test scores are really pretty bad." So what do you think about that? So, Mr. Reed's going to say. Mr. Reed's not going to say, "I know." I know, I've had it up to here. My next door neighbor's got a kid in that school, I can't figure what's going on there, da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da. No. Because that person that takes that because you're a board member, you just gave the opinion of this group of people. Your answer would be, you know what, it's a great question. I'll go let the board president know, I'll let the superintendent know. You should come for the next meeting, ask that question in public session. Done, personally, it's away. You've just, you've just empowered them. Then they get on their big old Twitter or Facebook, and say, "Guess what, I'm going to the board meeting," and then they come and ask the question. Meanwhile, you let the president or the board superintendent of schools know that this might happen, because the whole key on great confidence of the board, board of education, is the whole deal of no surprises. There should not be any question asked by any board member at a board meeting that is a surprise to anybody, especially the superintendent and the board president. No surprises. There should be no, nothing said by superintendent of school that would surprise the board in terms of something, of something that might, that you should have known about. The only surprises that should happen in a board meeting is around here. Because you don't know why they're there, they might have a question, and that's okay. And when the question is asked of someone from the community, they always ask the question to the board president. Then the board president does one of two things, either says, "Thank you for your question, we'll look into that," defers it to the superintendent or the VA, but at the same time, or feels that if there's a, because you work as committees, say, there's a budget question, and he knows that that's an answer that's already been discussed through the budget committee, he might defer it to the chair of the Republican Finance Committee. But the bottom line is, is about public confidence. When the board sees, when the community sees this group of people working as a legislative group, working in concert, and working with an attitude of civility, and working with an attitude of real professional skill, that raises professional, public confidence in your school district. And when you have public confidence in your school district, people who don't send their kids to the school like your schools even more, and then when you really need a community response in your favor, the odds of you getting that are much greater. The number one state in the nation that does not have children in the homes going to the local schools is Florida. The number two state in the nation is New Jersey. That might not be Nutley, but in the state of New Jersey, more homes who are taxpayers do not have children going to their local schools. And it doesn't mean they're going to private or parochial. There's no child in that home coming to the local schools. So therefore, your connection to the community is even that much more important. That much more. Are you a November board or a April board?
November.
Because you're a November board, if you behave yourself and keep everything to 2% underneath in terms of the, your budget, we all know that does not require a taxpayer vote, okay? Which even calls for the superintendent, the BA, and the board to be even that much more transparent, so they know where the money's going. And it doesn't mean that there's a reason for not, that suggests otherwise, but even more of the transparency of a board of education and the way it's being administered through the superintendent of schools and the way it's being governed by the board of education. The board of education only should ask a question that begins with the word "what" or "when." For example, Mrs. Flynn says, "When are we going to hear about the test scores?" I'm getting an answer here. Okay? When board members ask questions that begin with "what" or "when," you are being a board, a member of the board, because you're making sure the schools are run well. The "how" comes from Mr. Laszlo. The "how" comes from Mrs., this is it, Laszlo?
Ms. Lahn.
From Ms. Lahn. The administration takes care of the "how." You take care of the "what" and the "when." The minute you ask a question, starts with "how," you're micromanaging. Because you don't have to worry about "how." This man is being paid to take care of the "how." This young lady over here is being paid to take care of the "how." And all the administrators that he's meeting with, with his administrative team, are the "how" people. You are a macro thinkers. Board members are macro thinkers. Leave the micro stuff to Mr. Laszlo. That's why he's sitting there, that's why he said yes to the job. So, he, he's the micro guy.
He's getting paid by the hour.
And, in turn, he's a macro guy in the, as a chief education officer, working with his micro people who are your presidents. So it's just a matter of where you fall on the tree. Okay? The other thing that's critical to know is that it used to be where the school business administrator, chief financial officer, school business administrator was the empress, was the emperor of all finances, never to be questioned. While it doesn't work that way anymore, he's still responsible. It doesn't mean that the school business administrator does not take complete responsibility and control of what's going on in terms of finances, but when it's all said and done, it must, it now comes under responsibilities of superintendent of schools. So even though he may be your chief education officer, this young lady over here is your chief financial officer. This relationship is sacrosanct to make sure the board has confidence that the money that's being budgeted is being budgeted correctly. And the relationship of these two people with the board is also the third most sacrosanct relationship, because when the public sees that all of this works, they feel good about this school district. They know you're not going to make everybody happy, but they're going to know your decisions are made in such a way that you're doing the best thing at that time for the right people. Okay? All right, look at this next sheet, the L sheet. Let's go to the do's and the don'ts. I'm going to take one, for example, let's go to number seven. It says, "Do insist that the board keep the community informed on the progress and needs of the district." That's item number seven in the code of ethics that I was just reading. By, one, two, three, four, five, six. By Mr. Reed. Did you read that one?
I think so.
Yeah. All right. "Do insist that the board keep the community informed on the progress and needs of the district." The "don't" means, this is how you break the code. "Don't discuss confidential matters with anyone but the board." So I look at it this way. So what are the do's and the don'ts? If you do a "don't," you're in trouble. Don't do the "don't," and you'll be fine. All right? Who can file an ethics violation? Anybody. Anybody. Okay. Next thing. This gray sheet. When you get a chance, on the front and the back, this is where you can get yourself in trouble relative to common areas of concern. This means common areas of concern where you, as a member of the board, can be conflicted with whatever it says on these gray sheets. Okay? In terms of personal involvement, financial involvement, personal appointments, and things along those natures. Okay? Let's go to the salmon colored sheet, next. Nepotism. Anybody want to tell me what nepotism means?
Self-serving.
Self-serving. In your policy, who does your policy? School boards, this is not that. All right. In your policy manual, they're, they have just, well, the path line here, they have two years, they just expanded the nepotism. What constitutes nepotism? So I explain it to my board as this. Go on the family tree. Go to the last twig on the furthest branch and find the furthest leaf. If there's someone sitting there, they can't work in your district. More boards get themselves in trouble because a nepotism issue might come up relative to employment in the district. So be very, very careful, and do not hesitate to question when a recommendation is made, if you want to do that, when a recommendation is made by a superintendent for the heart of employee, just say, "Have the person declared the nepotism, the conditions are our policy." Your policy vote gives you all the answers you want. Boards just don't know that. They just don't go to the policy vote. Well, you have a question, go to the policy vote, the answer's in there. Okay? Next. These white sheets talk about board recusals. In other words, when you can, when you should recuse yourself when it comes to personnel matters, professional services. I know a board president whose husband was a school, was a school bus driver. Okay? And their school, and they, and did not drive a bus to the locals for their local school district, but at times, that school district, that bus company did provide bus services for, if they couldn't get their local buses to do field trips. So she made sure that no matter what was decided at a board meeting, a agenda, if it had to do with school buses, she recused herself, she didn't vote. So they could never be said that she voted for, you know, she made a decision. She said, "Look, just letting you know, they'll never, you'll never see my vote. I'll abstain on anything." So, same thing with the ethics. The next sheet just gets you, you don't know how long to see these sheets in your packet, just the difference between advisory opinion and complaints, and the huge information that you want to read when you get a chance. Okay? So because I don't have the time, that I would love to spend with you, but we're still getting through everything, we're not going to do the next sheet. But the next sheet gives you five or six scenarios to whether you, you would say this either breaks the rule of the code of ethics or it doesn't. But I have a couple that I'm going to just throw at you. For example, let's get past the code of ethics. Can a, can a board member have their child work in their school district? Yes or no? I say there's an appointment that's being made, and it is a child, yes or no? No. Okay? And so therefore, it can happen. It can happen, it can happen because they go downtown, right? If you're a board member, it can't be a legitimate one. Okay? Let me answer this procedural question. Can a board member walk into a school just to check things out?
No.
What, Mr. Cut, is it Kuch, how's that?
Kukta.
Kukta. You're saying no, which is the right, which is the right answer. Why are you saying no?
Because that would be micromanaging, and we're not supposed to do that.
Okay, so how can you still go into the school? Because you heard there's an incredible computer lab in the third grade's classrooms.
Something the superintendent...
Bang! You want to go visit the school, call the superintendent. Mr. Laszlo, I'd rather go in and see that hot god computer lab that's in the third grade or the middle school and check if I can see that.
Sure, let me do, let me check it out.
He calls the principal, says, "One of the board members would like to, would like to see the computer lab." Fine, tell him to come in tomorrow, the kids will be in there, you'll walk in, they'll know you're coming, they'll know you're coming, company's here, they'll probably have a chair for you, they might even have you at that participate. Nothing wrong with that. Check with the superintendent first. Superintendent then informs the principal, and you go from there, okay? Go to the next sheet, it's white, take out your pens. Because you all just did the oath, print your name, sign it, put today as date, and pass it. And Mrs. James, who keeps her files. Look, they're signing the code of ethics acknowledgement form, which will be also in the minutes, which is also part of tonight's presentation. All right? If you go, go to the left side of your packet. This is real quick. The top sheet is blue. Packet, left side, top sheet, blue. You have here more information that you should read about rulings on code of ethics charges. That's on the blue. If you go to the next sheet, which is tan, it talks to you about the school ethics commission regarding advisory opinions. You go to the next sheet, you have an ethics update from the committee of education about the school ethics commission, and if you've gone through these pages, there are all things you should know about what's going on over time relative to ethics and decisions that have been made by the school ethics committee. All right. Now, let's talk about confidentiality. When does confidentiality come into play with you as a board member?
Bobbing personnel.
I'm sorry?
Bobbing personnel.
What else? Personal, absolutely. What else?
Closed session.
Anything discussed in closed session? What else?
Student matters.
Student matters? Anything else?
Contracts.
Anything to do with a contract. Not just teacher negotiations, administration, anything of a contract. Because those things is that when you go to the closed session, there are nine categories to which you can discuss items in closed session. Those nine categories are off limits for public conversation. Public conversation meaning you or the members of the public. So if somebody comes up to you and says, "Hey, you know, I know you're a member of the board, and the teachers are negotiating a contract. How's it going, because I heard, I understand that you're one of the people on the negotiating team." Your answer would be, that person would be, "I'm not discussing contractual matters in closed session." Can't do that. Because if you become a lead on any of those matters, you could be looking at an ethics charge. An ethics charge could go everything from having you removed from the board, to being censured, to being suspended. And you just don't need that, because in the public, there's nothing worse than even being censured. Because I witnessed that on a board education. And I saw three people censured, which means they had to attend every meeting for the rest of the year, but they weren't allowed to talk. All right? So, in those matters, that are those nine items, those nine categories in closed session, now, when can you discuss closed session items in a public forum?
Once they're made public, in a public forum.
Right, because something happened in closed session, you came to a decision with your board attorney or as board members. You then opened, you came out, you opened a public session, and you made a motion, and you adopted some kind of decision. Now it's public information. Ordinary citizens are in trouble when they are, when they have closed sessions with hot topics that people are dying to find out what's going on in there. Especially matters of personnel. How should the presidents, the president of the board, because anybody who speaks should be talking to the president of the board. Public needs to understand and respect that as they sit here in this group, out here in this gallery, they're witnessing a meeting of the board in public. It's your meeting. It's your meeting. They're just allowed to come on in and watch. Right? They're watching a meeting of the board in public. And so therefore, how that is managed with the public and that relationship is actually through the board president and how he manages that kind of situation. Okay? So when all questions are directed at the president of the board, which they should be, he then makes a decision, I'm saying only say goodie because of all the good shit together. All right, he then makes a decision, whether or not he's gonna say thank you for your comment, or say, or maybe defer, or say, "You know what, we'll take that on advisory, and then we'll get back to you. Please come back to the next board meeting, or superintendent will contact you, or the case may be." It all goes through the president, it's so easy as being a board member in a public meeting. Just keep it going through the president of the board. Because then he's managing. Okay? Now, how do board members breach confidentiality? Look at this big sheet. And I really believe that with board members, it's the next sheet on that left side. All right? I think that board members really don't know they're breaching confidentiality when they do these things. They do it inadvertently, they make the, uh, they attempt to solve a district problem, they apply public pressure to the board, I'm gonna get back to that. They respond to a severely divided board, they get unbowed, they respond to divided loyalties. I think board members don't realize they're being, they're very confidential when they do these things. It's kind of like implicit things, it's mostly explicit. But I have a question. Let's just say that Mrs. Scholera has some real issues with some decisions that have been made by the board, and you don't like it. And you wanna write a letter to the editor. Are you up to? To the local paper? Or you tweet, or you email, or you text, or you do something?
Tweet and email are different, everybody's a little bit.
Well, no, no, you're still sending something out.
Issues, but, uh, no, it should be approved by the year president, I think.
You can do that, but then it shouldn't really come to the president of the board, who actually says, as the president of the board, I'm making this statement. When are you permitted, as a board member, to make a public statement about a board matter after a decision's been made? Or maybe there's something that has to do with public eye?
I still say that the rule of the president is your turn then?
No, they all did that, unless you.
Make your statement out of public view?
Yes.
Public view?
Well, let's just say you want.
You're the same writer, right?
Let's say, let's say. Let's say you want to write something in a local newspaper, any editorial.
You can, if you clearly state that it's your personal opinion and not your.
You must put it this way.
That's right. You don't give up your.
Yeah, you don't give up your freedom of speech. But what you, you know, you don't, you don't give up your free speech, being a board member, but you would write that maybe there's an issue where you really feel that it's not being, the issues aren't really being heard. And therefore, you decide to write a letter to a local paper or the case may be, okay? You can do that in a letter, but you have to write the disclaimer that you're writing as a private citizen, and you're not writing as a board member. Board members get in trouble when they write the letter, and it might be a great letter, but then they sign it, and then they sign, you know, their name, then they write "board member." Okay? You have to have the disclaimer, and then you're okay. If you don't give up your freedom of speech, you don't give up the rights, you're absolutely correct, this is just. Okay? So board members usually get themselves in trouble when they do these things inadvertently, and inadvertently is the key word. You probably don't even know you're doing it, so you gotta pay attention. The rest of the sheets here give you that, that information about the Ethics Commission and Ethics Council. Okay? Now, go to the four sheets that you pulled out, like I told you, put on your packet. The first sheet being. The first sheet being the twelve common mistakes, you see that? The deadly dozen? Okay? When you get a chance, read the deadly dozen. Board members actually do those things. Actually do those things. Like, for example, mistake number one, you're too impatient. Okay? And therefore, you're trying to rush things along. Well, when you see mistake number one, you're too impatient, that's an example of what it means to be impatient? But the right ways, understand that it takes at least a year to really learn the basis of school board service, and then it goes on from there. These twelve deadly dozen, okay? These, this deadly dozen really are mistakes that board members make unknowing. You must be cognizant of how you're being viewed. Okay? Mistake number three, you publicly challenge the board after a vote. It's too late. Doesn't mean you can't challenge the board before the vote. But once the board makes a decision, and they have a vote, you can't, after the, after the vote's made, and say, "You know what, I still don't like it." The board is expected to support the decision of the board based on the decision of the majority. However, it doesn't mean that you cannot say something before the vote. So when you, the motion's made, yes, second it, and then discussion, that's where you put in your ten cents to say, "You know what, I'm really not happy with it. I've done my homework, I talked with the superintendent, I don't think we spend this kind of money on the number of books, blah, blah, blah. Right now, I couldn't see myself voting no, but at the same time, I'm letting the board know upfront." Nothing wrong. Okay? So this deadly dozen is really kind of interesting to have. Okay? The next page, I had the rest. The next page is the eight traits of effective school boards. It was found, it was the next sheet of those four that I had to pull back. Um, the National School Board Association did this massive survey, and released this back in March of 2011. They found that board educations that were really great, high achieving boards, actually had these eight characteristics as part of the way they worked. It was just the way they worked as a personality. And boards, a low achieving, ineffective, inefficient board, did not carry these eight traits. So when you look at these traits of high expectations, believe that all children can learn, focusing on achievement, collaboration and communication, data savvy, goals and resources are aligned, make sure your money is put with the goals that you have for district and board, team leadership and team training. When you have those eight on your mind for decisions you make, you are a high achieving board, because good things will happen. All right? The next sheet here is my favorite. It's kind of like cardboard, it's all white. This is great. This is my favorite sheet of everything I have to give out. This says to the school business administrator, this says to the superintendent of schools, this says to the board president, this says to everybody on the board, "We put together for you by month the things you should be talking about." So you should expect, and this includes April's role of the board boards, you should expect to see these kinds of things on the agendas that have been made each month, or at least discussed. It's a great Chekhov list. Now, it doesn't mean that you have to do every single thing that's in there, but it really kind of keeps you, your compass ahead of true law in terms of making sure you're getting through all these things. Because look at all this thing that you have to do with board. Full-size paper, this is huge. Besides all the other issues you gotta do. Okay? So it's important to know that you keep this with you, okay? And don't be surprised if you see these things. Or if they're not, then the, as a committee chair, or the case may be, "Hey, I noticed, uh, we'll come up tomorrow, these things should be taken care of, what are we gonna do about that?" Why is April thirtieth a, a great date to know as a board member, as a member of the board? What's the big deal about April thirty? Anybody? What's the big deal about April thirty? Gotta do it. If you want CUSAC points, you gotta do it. If you wanna have a well governed board in a school district, you gotta do it. What happens by April thirty?
How do you rate the superintendent?
The superintendent must be evaluated. Meaning, it's been written, he's been conferenced, it's been signed, sealed, delivered, and it's filed. April thirty is the deadline date. That's not me saying this, this is not New Jersey school board saying, this is mandated, this is a law. Here's the lieutenant, must be evaluated by April thirty. Okay? And the three conditions to which he's evaluated is his job description, the district goals, and the six standards for school leaders in New Jersey. Do, do you use your own doc format, or do you use the New Jersey School Board's evaluation?
It's the school.
I'm not saying because I'm standing here, it's the best one of all, because it's most comprehensive, and it pretty much says the superintendent's schools well advanced. There you go.
This is it?
Okay? Do you do a board self-evaluation for New Jersey school boards? Good. Good. That's good, because out of the board self-evaluation, you then build your board goals, and you build your district goals. Okay, which is really important. Who writes the district goals action plan? District goals. Who writes the board's action plan for the board goals? The board. People don't, you'd be surprised, I mean, they don't know that. Okay? He takes care of the district goals. If one president or some committee or board member writes the action plan for the board goals. Out of the board goals, the district goals, the board self-evaluation, and the superintendent evaluation, you were then, got every, all bases covered. Everybody can prepare from the bottom of there. Okay? The last sheet is just a copy of what you got earlier. These are all the programs that we offer in New Jersey school boards, and on the back, you have the names, phone numbers, and email addresses of all the people there. Okay? All right. I'm done.
Dr. Vax, thank you very much. All right. I must, I must say, we didn't do this before, but I must say it was very important, because the presentation was great.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Great. So, um, I'll give you my business card, I'm gonna shake your hand. So if you get a chance, there's an evaluation sheet on the right side in the back, I think it's kind of like brown, tan, beige color. This is thanks to the check box, so if you wanna fill that out, I'd like to leave it at that. And I wanna thank Mrs. Yamas. And I wanna thank, uh, this is the cousin. Because I really, I, I've been dealing with them over the months through email, so now I have a face to go with the name, so thank you for all your help. Thank you. Okay, all right.
At this time, we'll let the panel committee report. Mrs. Natcher?
Um, the academic committee met on January fifteenth. Uh, superintendent went over most of our agenda. We reviewed professional development for staff administration, we reviewed field trips, internship requests, service agreement, Plaramas on the Meadowlands Pride. Um, kindergarten registration this year, we'll have an online component. Parents can enter general information about their students online before coming in with the medical documents and proof of residency. Uh, this will streamline the process. We also reviewed the math pilot. The pilot committee members, um, have evaluated a number of different programs. Plan is to pilot two different programs this year and make a final selection by the end of this year and implement the new program for the 2013, 14th school year. We received an update from special services. Um, Mr. Lazovic will work with Mr. Maldonado to provide a overview and summary of the department needs. Uh, for technology, the academic committee reviewed a number of the teacher websites. We were hoping to have access to assignments in the online gradebook through parent portal, um, but we're still waiting for a timeline.
Dr. Vax. Dr. Reed?
Please sit.
Seven, okay. Finance, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. President. Finance committee met on January nineteenth. At that meeting, we had a presentation on the JIF and the SPL. JIF is the Joint Insurance Fund, uh, which covers most of our liability, uh, insurance. And the SPL is the School for Excess Liability Limits. They ensure the, uh, workmanship competence and other things, and it's a school, uh, school, essentially for schools, uh, school districts. Uh, it was an overview of their services and what they're providing. There was a, uh, they presented a binder which has financial information about the two, two funds in there. And there are a couple of, Mrs. Yamas has a couple of extra copies that they left if any of the board members want to see. At the end, when they concluded their presentation, we had some questions, and they are going to return to the finance committee on February nineteenth. Uh, we had some specific questions about coverage as to when things are covered and when they are not covered, which they said they would come back with the appropriate parties to, to answer that. This binder has an overview, doesn't, the detailed provisions of the policies are actually online. And Mrs. Yamas has the password to access that if any board members would be interested in seeing the details. It's rather comprehensive. We also reviewed the financial resolutions in tonight's agenda. The, uh, most of, a chunk of the time is spent on the budget development going over that, which will be presented at retreat following this, uh, this meeting. Mrs. Yamas presented, talked about the utility auctions that are coming up. We are currently participate in SEM for our electric billing, and that we agreed that we would wait until a strike price for the SEM is declared, and then we have an option of going out for, on an auction on our own. So once we know the strike price, then we will take care of that. Finally, we reviewed the financials for the extended date.
Dr. Vax, Mr. President.
Mr. Scholera? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, on the administration committee, um, we, uh, had me the other night, attended by the president, myself and Mr. Spazaro, Mr. Lazovic, and Mr. Pyro is also in attendance in the meeting. And we had an athletic update, so I'll do a quick athletic update. Um, we talked about coaches' communications, there's now a weekly meeting with the coaches each week with Mr. Pyro. Um, there's a code of conduct that's been adopted for the parents, uh, the new, uh, students signing up for sports. There's a code of conduct, and the parents will review and sign, and, uh, Mr. Pyro gets a copy back of that. That is the new, uh, code of conduct that we just adopted in the administration committee, um, uh, committee. Um, reviewed the management, the athletics office. Um, of course, we just have the full sports award program, uh, facility improvement plan. Uh, Mr. Pyro's working on a one, three, five, and 10-year plan. Uh, we did have updates on bowling, basketball, cheerleading, ice hockey, indoor track, and wrestling. Um, and just to cover a few bits short, that, uh, we're gonna be doing a, uh, Mr. The president's, uh, has given an update on our bowling sports programs once a month. They're standing, but I want you to know that, uh, bowling was successful this week. Uh, volleyball team was very, uh, successful. Um, our ice hockey team, uh, by the way, our varsity hockey team is now in the top twelve in the state of New Jersey for the first time ever. Um, both teams are currently, uh, varsity is in first place in their division tie, and the JV team is also in first place in their division. Um, so I'm gonna be doing a full update on that, uh, once a month. Uh, we reviewed, uh, convention reports, um, from Mr. Pyro, we tend to mention on booster clubs, organization management, health. There'll be some recommendations eventually from the administration committee. And we're working on the framework for winter sports, spring sports, and a few other things for our next meeting. Uh, back to the administrative committee. Um, we discussed and provided that information. There was a meeting held on the rectory school plan that we're working on with the town, county officials. Uh, warm range facilities, the superintendent reported on that. Uh, Dr. Ager's working on that, and we're having our new district architects also gonna be examining space in the middle school. We reviewed security plans, uh, February fifteenth, a full professional day, it's gonna include a full review of the updated security plans by building. There'll be training for the staff, uh, training for all of the personnel. Uh, and we also have, uh, in the district, a new architect is also gonna be terminating comprehensive facility, putting facility needs for the future, so we can budget for it. Uh, we're working on a communications plan between myself and Mr. Nicoletti, uh, Mr. Lazovic, and, uh, the mayor and director of public safety, Mr. Petracca. Um, on the budget, we reviewed established staffing, needs by category based on strategic plan for, uh, full-time educators. Um, we are establishing, uh, two new, uh, job personnel restrictions. Head nurse, so the new one nurse in charge of all nurses in all the buildings, as well as a head teacher that can be in charge when a supervisor, uh, the principal is out in the building. Um, we're reading the next set of policies. We're reading the next set of policies for first and second rating, we're also on the agenda tonight. And at our future meetings, we have some technology updates and policy.
Thank you, Mr. Sklera. Any other committee reports? Yes, Mr. Sklera.
I've attended a lot of meetings recently, I apologize.
We appreciate your input.
Update on our education foundation and fundraiser. We are having our first annual education fundraiser foundation event, March 21st. We'll be at the Nord Club. We have, actually, we have a DJ who's donating his services. The committee is currently myself and Lorraine Kazinsky are the co-chairs. Also on the committee, doing different things, progressive correspondence, Vicki Flynn. Working on tickets for me is Lisa Dancheck-Martin and Kathy Rumpachelski. Mr. Kuch and Mr. Kazinsky are also serving on that committee. The press release should be out about the next week, and it's in about two weeks after that. The Walker Middle School PTO, took me to that meeting this week. Believe it or not, they're already ordering the eighth grade gowns and measurements on January 22nd. Seems like we're not even through half the year. They're actually having a dance on January 25th, casual black and white theme dance. And a key concern is, the last time they had a dance, the air conditioning was not on, and we won't be sure it's working this time. The eighth grade promotion party has been set for June 20th. The next meeting will be on March 6th. On March 27th will be the sixth grade orientation coming up to the middle school, and that is John Walker Middle School. Friends of lovely singers, that's all busy two weeks. Friends of lovely singers. There are 15 choirs, we got over 800 students singing in our lovely schools currently. Mrs. Kazinsky, design for these committees.
I'm just looking at Mr. Thomas, because I've been with this for quite a few years.
The annual comedy night and the service election is gonna be the Italian chips comedy troupe. Be a full Italian feast, be on February 23rd, 7 o'clock. We have the Phoenix Center Gym. Money raised will be offset the choir travel costs to Connecticut for the National Eastern Division High Schools. This is a high award, there's only so many choirs that are chosen from around the nation. We will give only, in fact, take 110 students to that program, who will be, we will be going there, as well as performing at the Heritage Festival of Gold in New York City, which is over a three-day event, which they perform on Monday. They actually have a dinner cruise on the second day, and on the third day, if they made it through the first rounds on Friday, is another competition, and that's the Coral Festival of New York. The show for the high school, the Little Shop of Horrors, will be March 7th, 8th, 9th, and 10th. And on May 30th will be the banquet for Friends of Singers. And then one last thing, I just happened to get while I was there. Also, on February 9th, that's February 23rd, February 9th is the music boosters fundraiser, which is also at the same night as Yanacola School. And that will be held at the Parks and Rec Building, those tickets are available, most is also on our website. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. President. We joke about it, and we appreciate the time that you put in, and it's, and we've been trying to encourage our board members to be more visible in the community, and I appreciate that. It is, you can't tell anything about that conflict that night, the night with Yanacola and with the music.
No, Yanacola, it was supposed to be February 7th, but I think there was a problem at the venue at the Brownstone, so the Brownstone changed it to 2 to 9, so, yeah.
That's fine. Any other committee reports?
I have, um...
Sure.
The configuration committee report, configuration committee met on January 22nd, and that's the part of the strategic planning. They split themselves into three different groups. Group to take care of the high school, middle school, and the elementary school, and they broke up into teams, and what they're going to do is, they're gonna go out and they're gonna visit high achieving districts with similar demographics. They're gonna go and they're gonna look at the different school models, different kind of teaching styles, different, maybe even different periods, how they bring up their day, just basically how they, how they conduct themselves, and bring back reports for different information for districts. See if anything might be able to work there.
Thank you. Any others?
I attended the NASDAQ meeting. I will not pretend to know what they are, but it was on my last week. And it was probably our last meeting, and they, I just wanna convey that they're very concerned about the special services position, and, you know, you can see the anxiety on their face, and they all seem to want a lot of information. You know, they wanted to be kept in a loop, they kept surprised what's going on, because, and I didn't, I tried to alleviate some of their concerns, but I don't know if I was successful, but I just said, you know, there's going to be a process, it's an ongoing discussion. Mr. Lazovic told me that the special services director, he usually gives us some kind of bucking. So, and I told, and I shared our concern with the board as well, and how it's a priority for all of us for the next two months.
There should be no doubt in anyone's mind that that is a priority of the superintendent and the school board, and we all have those concerns. I appreciate you later. Anything else, any other committee reports? Okay, at this time, we have the hearing of citizens on resolution items only. We're not cut to the force of a meeting where we allow members of the vote to address the board in this section of our session. Comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. On board regulations, 601, allow 20 minutes for these communications. Each person should be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within that requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only if all others wish to speak on a topic that's unheard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personal directive, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board, or the first person to step forward. Mr. Thomas, if you could move that microphone over to the middle, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. Alan Thomas, 108 McKinley Street. That was a very interesting presentation we had of the School Boards Association, and I, since you're going to be voting on the code of ethics, you might wanna ask for clarification of what you say to the person in the shop right when the board members ask the question. We just heard Mr. Sklera went to eight dozen meetings where he ran into citizens all the time, and I somehow suspect that his response to all their questions was, "I can't tell you, I have to say it in a board meeting." So I would think you'd want clarification on that, Mr. President, because that certainly went over my head on what, what he was meaning by that. But, are there any other questions?
No, that's fine.
Mr. President, I have questions regarding, if I get it right, the question? Finance Resolution Number 11.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, was this a, is this a contract that was sent out to bid, public bidding?
We, we, we listed it through the RFP.
Okay. And we, did we receive more than one response to the RFP?
Yes.
Do you know how many we received?
I'm going to say four, but I think... Seven.
And was, is the selected, was IMAC the lowest bidder on that one?
IMAC was not the lowest bidder at the time. When we approached him to match the price of the lowest bidder, he did do that for us.
And did our RFP procedures allow for going back to people asking to lower their bid?
Yes, sir.
It did?
Our committee allowed that, our committee allowed that responsibility.
Is it the RFP covered by state law?
I would probably assume that it is, yes.
I won't ask any more questions in that regard without, because it's the council. If, was, there was a committee that reviewed this, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
And who was on that committee?
The committee consisted of Mr. Koepke, Mr. Reed, and myself.
Mr. President, I, I, I have to say, I was delighted when the board adopted these RFP procedures. Because as, as you know, and I've talked about this privately as well as publicly, is that it's very important to the board to have credibility in how it spends the safety's money. Okay? And there was a perception in the town, perhaps shared by many, but or not many, I don't know, okay, that sometimes contracts are awarded through the old buddy system, the old boys' network, as opposed to things of merit, quality, service, and so on. Ever since you've adopted this RFP process, having observed these kinds of resolutions where we're contracting for services, I see the same old people winning the contract. And I think the odds of that happening under a true open RFP process to be like getting five oil flushes in a row. Okay? So I'm very concerned about our RFP process. Just what you've said before, Mr. President, just is astonishing to me. One of the things we heard before is, how does what you do as a board member affect the kids? Okay? And I can't help but think that this is a company that we have paid lots of money to over the years, creating some form of board members more money than we should have. Okay? And I think that has an impact on our kids. We don't have them. Our teachers in all our elementary schools, okay, the superintendent's struggling to run a gift and talent program, okay, school clubs that were cut years ago, no one's talking about bringing it back. And lots of other things, the space issue. And if you're not gonna follow the procedure, including the spirit of those procedures, okay, the board risks losing its credibility again. And I know, Mr. Kazinsky, I'm so happy you're president, because I think you're gonna do the best job possible. And I know what your reasons are for coming back on the board, and he's a great looking man. I know you wanna do the best, but you gotta follow the spirit, not just the letter of things. And you can't let the old boys' network work its way back into your procedures, or you risk all that you're doing. Thank you, sir.
And I appreciate that input. And I certainly feel, as a board, a member of the board, that we don't want that to happen. I do believe we filed the RFP procedure, I think that Mr. Koepke, and Mr. Reed, and myself had many lengthy discussions concerning the old boy picture, but in my opinion, and it's only my opinion, and each man can certainly speak for himself, the, when it came down to getting the best bang for the buck, getting the right price, that's going to give us the flexibility we need for our children, I think we came down to that choice. And again, it was gone through the committee, it was, it was pretty much torn apart by the committee, and we still came up with the recommendation of what you might refer to as, as an old boy person. Sometimes, maybe those old boy people are the right people for the particular choice, and that's why, or one of the reasons that we came to this conclusion. And it was not unanimous, and it probably won't be unanimous on the board, but we did follow the procedure to get to this point, I believe. I appreciate your input. Anyone else like to be heard? If not, we will move on to, Mrs. Vanccher, please?
Mr. President, I move a resolution of code of ethics for school board members, 18A12-24.1.
Second. Take the long pause.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Koepke?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sklera?
Yes.
Mrs. Spazaro?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes. And, and I don't think I need to say this, if any of the board members had something they wanna say, I, we're gonna run this a little bit different. You're certainly entitled to speak up if you had a different opinion.
Is this the time for it now?
Well, I'm sorry, it might have, it might have. All right. I'm sorry, Mr. President, we're done with that first bill under resolution? Thank you. Academic, Mr. Klein, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I move to make a motion to introduce academic resolutions, 1 through 4. That's ready.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Coopler.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Koepke?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sklera?
Yes.
Mrs. Spazaro?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes. Mr. Spazaro, administration, please, resolution?
Yes, Mr. President, I move administration, resolution number 1 is ready?
Second.
Mr. Kucza, please?
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Koepke?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sklera?
Yes.
Mrs. Spazaro?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes. Mrs. Russo, finance, please?
Yes, I'd like to move finance resolutions, 1 through 11, as listed, ISO rule.
Second.
Mr. Kucza? Discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. When I was looking at the scoring sheets, I saw that one of the other companies scored a little bit higher, and the price was a little bit lower. How come that other company wasn't considered?
They, they were all considered.
Why didn't we choose that one?
I can only speak for myself. I think when we ended up, the price was the same.
Well, it looks like it was about $10,000 less.
Okay. I personally felt comfortable with the, with the responsibility that we've been getting from our present broker. I didn't see the reason to have to move off the brokers. The other company did not offer me anything more, except probably a little more in the way of technical logical support. I felt comfortable with the interaction that we had with the present company, and that was the reason that I voted in that direction.
I also participated, chaired that committee, and we interviewed four, four finalists. And at, at that time, I had scored three out of the four really close, in, in all things considered. One who was actually a lot lower in price, which I think was a low ball price, and I'm always concerned about those kinds of things. And in fact, one of their sister companies was, they had the same parent company, when they were making their presentations, actually kinda said, "They're not really qualified." I mean, they kinda pooh-poohed them. So, had to discount that one. But the other ones, I thought were very close overall, and that IMAC, I know, our history with them when it comes to negotiating the rates with Horizon, and when we need various things from Horizon, they've been very good at going to bat for us, and the personal relationships with Horizon. To me, that was the overriding factor in this process. I think, you know, 1% in rate is worth a lot more than a $10,000 difference in what the fee is.
But do, we didn't get rates from any of the other companies?
No, no, I'm sorry, when I say 1% in rate, I mean, 1%, if they can negotiate a premium rate that's 1% better than, than we otherwise would have gotten, that's worth $80,000 approximately versus a $10,000. And, and I think that when we needed them to go to Horizon, when we had the, the issue with the aides, and we decided not to outsource them, and they negotiated something with us, and they've done that several times. Their relationship with Horizon, I think, is very good, and that we need them, they are there to get us through these kinds of things, and that was my consideration.
But we don't know what other rates they would have gone from the other companies?
No, you never know... No, you never know, that's an unknown. But, so you only can deal with relationships, and they have a very strong relationship with the upper management, senior management of Horizon.
Dr. Reed?
I guess, my perspective, I have to send it to Trusty Kaczynski and Kushka. I guess my major reservation, I guess primarily relied on the cost structure that was involved. And I think it was quite telling, one of the insurance brokers, Connor Strong, actually verbalized when we were trying to negotiate that rate, whether it was going to be a commission-based system based on percentage, or a flat consultant rate. And that represented that as healthcare costs will continue to rise inevitably, why should our commissions go up as well? And out of the four companies that were interviewed, IMAC was the only company that swayed away from that consultant, flat fee structure, whereas the other three companies were more amenable to working with us. And I think one of the other telling issues, and I respect IMAC, and again, I'm going to, of course, respect the decision of our group in terms of how that, how the vote is going to transpire. But more importantly, I guess I was swayed by the comprehensiveness. And it could have been the toss of a coin between either Connor Strong and/or Brown, and Brown Advisors, the two other companies that were in the mix. And I think, again, the comprehensiveness of what they were providing regarding this review process and this overhaul, if you will, of our plan's design, the administrative, financial, as well as compliance issues. And it's something that our superintendent has embodied in terms of how we look at our school district and best practices. They, in turn, were going to adopt a similar model and look at best practices. And I think they had an illustrious and a strong record in the state providing those types of services. So that's what, I guess I was swayed by, was this data-driven approach and the comprehensiveness of what they were providing. And it made a formal analysis, and that was my perspective.
Thank you very much.
I'd just like to clarify, because I know you hurt to manage it. The RFP process is not a bid. It's a totally different scenario. So it's not on price in RFPs. So let's clarify why we do an RFP. Or we would do a bid, take the cheapest one, not get the best for our kids all the time. So we do an RFP, which is standard to it. And if you follow the township, or I challenge you to follow what we've done in the state, then most of the time, you carry over the same companies that you've had a track record with, unless you found something that was totally extreme, that swayed the way you would change a carrier. Because when you have a track record working with a carrier, you do the RFP, you want to make sure they're in the ballpark. Of course, if there's a $100,000 difference, that's a telltale sign. But that's not the way it usually works. So if the committee's reviewed it, and there was a standard to it, you know, that's the way the process is supposed to happen. And truly, and I don't care if you track it to the commissioners and not me, to what we, the insurance carriers at the state, most of the time, unless there's been something outrageous, the carriers usually return to that site unless there's been a problem.
Any other discussion?
Quick question, for sure. So the fees gap we paid this company last year compared to this year is going to be significantly less. Sorry, but how much of the savings we've already paid last year is what we expect to be?
Last year, it was about 2.5% of the premium. This year, they initially paid it at 2%, lowered it to 1.5%, and then just lowered it to a flat fee. So it was less than half.
And I think that also, they are agreeable to either a flat fee or include it in the premium. You know, they say they'll go either way with it, just that they thought there were certain advantages to having it part of premium. Because you can always adjust the percentage to get that flat. The dollar amount, they're guaranteeing a dollar amount, however it works, and it gives you more... I think what they're indicating is that when you're dealing with Horizon, if it's built in there, there's a little more flexibility in negotiating the rate. But they are willing to do it either way. So if we want a flat fee outside the premium rate, they're willing to do it. Because I had a couple of follow-up questions of them and of Brown and Brown, and that was one of my follow-up questions with IMAC.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just heard two different statements, because Mr. Reed said they wouldn't agree to a flat fee, and this young officer said they went to a flat fee.
I will speak for Mr. Reed, because he speaks for himself. But that night, at our discussion, there didn't seem to be too much flexibility for IMAC to go through the flat fee or to go to...
Percentage?
Percentage. That was in an open discussion that they didn't say he definitely would not do it. They were not as willing as the other groups that came before us to do it. Some correct?
But part of the follow-up, the follow-up email, they said we'll do it either way. Because I asked the question, and I wanted to then expand upon the rationale for keeping it within the premium rate. And I was wondering if I have a follow-up question to them. One of my follow-up questions to Brown was with respect to which township, which school districts they lost.
So then it is comparison, if we go to read it at a flat fee, because we just talked about getting the common screen, and that's what we chose.
And we're going to choose what serves not the best as far as money savings to the community and development. We can go either way.
Real quickly, as I said earlier, the issue being that as our healthcare costs continue to rise, and you have that percentage based on that. So it's, of course, the business administrator and the superintendent coming together, and the consensus with the board is, well, what's the best insurance for, nothing, that's the bottom line.
No, what I'm saying, it sounds like this company, then whoever, the superintendent and the business district, straight, and the president come together.
Yeah, but that wasn't, that night, that wasn't really what was on the table.
But we have that in writing now, in an email.
We haven't agreed.
Right.
What's the agreement?
They agreed verbally that they would go, they agreed verbally that they would go with every way we decide to go.
There was an email saying that they would do it either way. And in fact, when they were in, we had them in, they said they would do it. I think they didn't, they would do it either way at that point in time, that they strongly recommended it as part of the premium. And that's why I had a follow-up question to them in an email, so to expand upon why they thought it was better to have it within the premium.
Any other discussion?
A point of order, Mr. President. What are you, are you voting to...
If you're going to address us, which I think is the wrong time, but I'll allow you that to address it anyway.
I appreciate it, Mr. President, very much. I'm not sure what you're voting on. You're voting to approve a contract? Because it doesn't sound like you have a contract yet to vote on. So I don't know what you're voting on.
As Mrs. Dancheck mentioned, we are approving them as the broker of record. It's not a contract per se. We are approving them as the brokers of record. Which is a continuation of Mr. Thomas, of what we do every year. That's not the answer, but it's a continuation of what we do every year.
And will the board approve a contract at some point?
I don't know that it is a contract with them.
We approve the health contract when it comes up for review.
You approve the cross-the-shield.
We approve a contract who's across the windshield, which states the rates. And that, whatever the ratings are, if the commission or flat fee to the broker is built into the rates, it would be in that contract. If we're paying the broker directly, then we have to have a written agreement with the broker for the amount of money that they're going to pay.
So which one are you going to do?
That's going to be a determination made by the board in consultation with the superintendent and myself. I also have a meeting on January 31st with Horizon, at which time I also wanted to discuss with them to what, is there a benefit to the district in terms of renewal if the fee is included in the renewal, or if the fee is outside of the renewal? So then we'll have all the information that we need to make an educated decision.
How does that work for the employees, though? Because I know the employees may have to pay a percentage of the health premium. You know, and it's only, it goes up to whatever, 35% within the next couple of years. You know, if the insurance broker fee is built in to the cost, does that mean the employee has to pay for that? Or do they just pay for the actual health insurance?
That's another part of the question that we need to look at, how the government regulates. Because that's something we'll take into consideration for.
And that particular question was placed out to all brokers. So no matter what broker we went with, it probably would have been whether we're going to go with the flat fee or built in, whichever broker we choose or chose. Mr. Reed?
Charlie, just a quick point of clarification, just so that the board is not exposed. Because our scoring sheet, based on review, and this, again, is in relation to Lisa's comment earlier, the final tally does not add up. So there's got to be a strong rationale surviving, at least by the business administrator, assuming as to why we're choosing IMAC this evening. Because, again, it could easily be contested, and leaves us open in terms of how this scoring sheet looks that's presented in front of us. Because there, if you go the final totals, they're not the highest total. If...
And we don't, and we didn't have to go by the highest total, Mr. Reed. We went by the presentations put before us, and that's what we chose to go with.
No, I get that, but there's a process in place, and there's a final score here. I'm saying that, in the event if this was contested by the insurance company, that didn't get the bid. They usually say, hey, why, well, we are more than, that's my concern.
Okay.
So I just wanted to...
Any other discussion? Call for the vote, Mr. Kucza?
Mrs. Dancheck, morning. Yes, to all except number 11, no. Ms. Flynn?
Yes, except for number 11. I must recuse myself for a professional...
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Koepka?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes, for all except for number 11, no, based on the reasons that I have provided.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Salera?
Yes.
Mrs. Bizardo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. Mr. Reed, will you take personnel, please?
Yes. I make the motion to remove personnel resolutions. Number one, please.
Second.
Mrs. Kucza?
Mrs. Dancheck, morning.
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Koepka?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Salera?
Yes.
Mrs. Bizardo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. At this time, we'll hear from citizens on non... On any item, all regulations around 30 minutes for these communications. Again, these persons have been in the three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me. First person who has, would like to come forward to the microphone is...
Mr. President, this time, it's me, also.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kucza.
Ken Kirk, spokesperson for the Paranapsi Network, 45-Hampton Place. First of all, congratulations, Mr. President and Madam Vice President, and welcome, Mr. Klein, and Happy New Year, everybody. So I just, I wasn't at the December 17th meeting, and I have a question about a particular resolution, and I have copies, so you don't have to remember. So if I could just give out the copies, and then we could just get clarification. This is in regards to number eight, the approval of the consultant services. Be it resolved that the Board of Education creates the appointment of Michael Bizarro to serve as counselor to the district's administrators as needed. My question is, and I didn't really understand who Mr. or Dr. Bizarro was. I did some research, and I don't know if I'm correct, which is on the second page, which is, actually, it's a really dense website. But this was his fees for a 45-minute session, and there was $175 per session. So I'm really not clear as to what Dr. Bizarro is going to do here for administrators. I'm a little unclear, because I know that administrators get counseling on their health, in their health benefit coverage. I don't know if this is a mandatory program, or if this is training. And it was kind of like left open-ended. And in number seven, it says approval of service providers. All of these people provide services to children and to our students. And I was just wondering why administrators were getting, is this going to be open to teachers? I mean, it was just kind of open-ended, and I just want to clarify.
Mr. Lewis?
From the time the time the district needs to send people up for all their professional development, and we require the professional development, we have to pick up the tab. So in this instance, Dr. Bizarro was actually recommended by NJPSA, NJ School Boards, as well as NJEA, which is why he was selected to work with teachers and administrators on a regular basis, leadership, counseling, evaluations, et cetera. And there are a number of instances in the past, for just even professional development-wise, where his services are served like that might be needed.
Okay, and how long will he be, how long is his stay going to be there, so?
The idea, any service like this, is that there's an initial evaluation from that medical professional in the state Dr. Bizarro will present to me, when I always turn around and present to the board a plan of action that he's recommending, based on the initial evaluation, same with the students, and that will certainly include a budget.
Okay, and will the public know how much we're paying him?
No, I guess we know now.
I guess we know now. Is that, is that the same floating fee that he's charging us as...
We have a separate contract.
We have a separate contract. Is the public going to know what, how much that is?
At the end of the day, when we have to produce whatever spending bills, the public will know how much money we spent to Dr. Bizarro, as far as who we're sending in, for how long, for what reasons, those are all personnel.
Okay, so when the services are rendered, that's when we will be paying him? Is that what's happening?
The board will know ahead of time.
Okay, will the public?
As a matter of personnel, no. We would not be talking about who we're sending, if we don't want someone trying to figure out who's going where for what reason, if it's a personnel.
Right.
Something that we can share in public, we absolutely can.
Right, and we're not asking for that. We're asking for how much are we paying Dr. Bizarro?
No matter what, it has to be, it goes as.
Excuse me?
When we make pay to Dr. Bizarro, that amount has to be public.
That doesn't have to be public?
Those are the bill lists when we go to pay him, he won't find out ahead of time.
I would say it's a bad...
Wait, wait, wait.
I think what Charlie's trying to get to is, we should have material terms on the arrangement in a resolution, so it's clear to the public. So if it's $175 now, or I don't know what it is, shame on me for not answering. That should probably be in the resolution.
Right, and we can say, that was been handed to the board. Doc, his CV, all the pertinent information that we have, that would go to the board.
I can just say this is public, it's...
And that's fine, as far as the fee structure, I don't have an issue.
That's it, that's just the fee structure. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Anyone else like to address the board? Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to engage in dialogue. And I know that's a little unorthodox, but I appreciate it. I hope I wasn't out of line.
That's going to be easy for us.
Mr. President, I did want to stand up, and I don't mean to dispute what Mrs. Salera had to say, but I think the RFP process is a little bit more than just providing a check on someone we've been giving contracts to for years. Because if that's all it was, why would any other vendor ever take the bother of submitting RFPs? That's not what it's there for. It's more to make sure you're getting the best value for your dollar. It's not just to provide a check.
No, I don't think Mrs. Salera was saying that. I think she's saying that throughout global practice, normally, the vendor comes back as long as he's doing outstanding jobs. RFP process that was brought forward, pretty much by our new superintendent, by school board member, Vicky Flynn, is that we wanted more transparency. Our RFPs are supposed to be giving us that, that's what we're looking for, that's what we are looking for.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one more comment.
Anyone else like to come forward before we... Mr. Thomas, you're very...
Hi, Kim Pharaoh, 1:20 AM. I know this may seem incidental compared to some of the other things we discussed. We just want some clarification from Washington School in regards to the bake sale issue that's been going on. Something we've been doing for years. We've raised, in one bake sale, in the course of two, three hours, we've raised $900. This past month, we helped 30 families in the community and gave, I believe it was $500 to the victims of Hurricane Sandy. We've been getting mixed, I've mixed answers in regards to what we can do. We're getting told, there's a law, you can't do it, but then we're getting told that you can't do it during lunch periods because of the health, the healthy lunch issues and everything. And I completely understand that. And then the other argument is, well, it's taking away from their academics. An argument is that they're coming down for literally five minutes, they come down, they learn how to, you know, give their change, figure out how much it is, and boom, they're back to the class. What can we or can we not do? What can we or can we not do?
And, and first of all, nothing when it comes to our children, I know you don't mean it as, as incidental, and we're just as concerned about the bake sale at Washington School as we are as about our RFPs. And, and I appreciate your time, I appreciate what all the PTOs and all the school districts do. I, I thought Mrs. Flynn had explained it to you fairly recently, but if you don't want, I'll have our superintendent explain what the policy is that involves bake sales during the school day. Okay, if anyone wants to...
Hi, then. Sorry. As far as the bake sales, is it another example, I just want to make sure we're doing things consistently. Everybody just talked about coming to the bake sale, we support, we support the PTOs. You guys do fantastic things, school as a large organization, I go to PT council wherever I possibly can. And I know this issue came up, I know that Nikki was at the meeting and conveyed again differences in code versus policy versus procedure, trying to be consistent. Certainly acknowledge that we can't add to the menu during, of the offering during lunchtime.
Right.
Which that means the only other time is during instruction, and there's two pieces that I know we're talking about. The first is that most school districts have moved away from any kind of event like this, which is going to encompass more than bake sales, where you're removing students during instructional time to purchase something. The first issue is the removal from instructional time. A number of people, myself included, have issue with, we have limited time as it is, the kids get pulled, and the teachers are struggling to keep a coherent schedule based on all the different things that happen, mandatory drills, and a lot of these are all around work. The other piece, though, I don't know if it's discussed as much, but we're in captive order, there's a number of, they can be federal laws even, where we have to be very careful that we're not putting students in a position because they have to come to school, where they're in a way captured to something, such as spending money. And that includes a bake sale. So if we pull someone, if we pull an entire class out of math, they're not going down the length we will. And that can put any student, and our job is not just to protect the whole district, but the individual student, if one student can't afford the cupcake, the mutton, or the healthy snacks that you're providing, it does put them in a difficult position. There are a number of arguments with other policies or procedures that follow the same instance, but this idea that, number one, we're removing them from during instructional time, we have two buildings, two elementary buildings that don't do bake sales at all. But number two, then, we're taking captive, all the students have to be there for math, for language arts, or for gym, and now we're taking them someplace and, in a way, encouraging them to spend money. It puts the student and possibly the parents in an uncomfortable position. I can say, I know Mr. Jones as well, I hope articulated that across all of our buildings, if we want to hold bake sales, they have to be outside of instructional day, number one, because we can't do it during lunch, because students will be free to select their own, and obviously brought down, and it doesn't interfere with instructional time. And so what we try to do is make clear and support the PTOs, anything that we do on-site, we need building use forms. In the past, I know we have them, but it's put us in difficult situations. So other principals have been trying to help, if organizations like the PTA, if they're a club or whatever, just follow what already was an existing procedure, to make sure there be documentation of things. And that, as of right now, bake sales can be held for one after school, when students are coming or leaving, and almost all of them have some kind of parental or guardian presence to kind of, it's not a forced interruption in instruction, and it's not something forced on them as a group that they have to kind of walk down either...
I got it. He was...
Does that make sense?
And just to follow up a little bit, I know that there is some wavering of the policies in the past with this particular board and with this particular superintendent, and that's not going to happen. What might have existed last year, and we are going to be following the policies that are put out there now, and our policy is, we'll allow PTOs to have the bake sale before school or after school, not till in the academic day, and, and that will not be relaxed in Yannick Court, different in Spring Garden, it will be the same throughout the district.
That was always, that was always a, a policy?
Again, two thousand and seven, I, I think it was adopted, and, and for whatever the reason, there might have been a little leniency, flexibility, whatever you might want to call it in the past, it, it, it's not easy to do that, and this board finds it easier...
I, I get that.
This board finds it easier just to abide by the rules.
And just to add on, because we had that direct conversation, I know that we have seven different PTOs, and each one, you know, exists in a different environment, because every building has its own personality. This is certainly no way a decision to hurt some and not hurt others. We're trying to be consistent. I know that it impacts the school district, so one of the things we talked about, and I wanted to talk about, the council, is that we have to come up with ideas to make sure that we're supporting all of our seven PTOs and PT council equally. But again, as Mr. Kaczynski said, partly he's explaining why certain policies exist of this. And sometimes it's difficult, because it may not impact ninety-nine kids, but that last kid, it does. And sometimes that's the reason the policy exists, but I want to make sure we're out there making that part clear, and also brainstorming, like, if this is going to impact someone negatively, how can we figure out another way to make something positive out of this?
And we are concerned also. I mean, Mrs. Flynn brought back the argument, valid argument, and, and we are concerned on how we can make sure you're not losing that camaraderie that you have into nine hundred dollars also. So we will spend more time talking about, see if in some way, there's something we can do to help you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Anyone else?
No more leaving.
You're still lucky.
I did get, because I couldn't attend the December meeting, and I couldn't talk of Blackman. I just, again, wanted to congratulate the board and administrative staff and the teaching staff on the middle school program studies, an excellent document, and I see changes that will be made next year. I'm glad everyone will be glad to see that Blackman is still there, and so on and so forth. And again, congratulations on that.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Anyone else? Any old business? Mrs. Flynn?
I just wanted to formally recognize, we, we talked about it a lot amongst ourselves, but I wanted everyone to know that the Board of Education all shipped in, we got a thank you note from Commissioner Rogers about the adoptive family. This board adopted a family, and also individual board members adopted their own family. And this board really got together, and I think they did a really nice job before the holidays, so I want to thank everyone for shipping in and participating. I also want to, in light of the Washington School issue, I would like to encourage everyone to go to their tricky tray, because they need to make up that money. It is at the Westmount Country Club, which I am very excited about, because that's where I have my weight perception of having been back since. And I know the executive chef, so I'm going to try to make sure it's a good event. But I encourage everyone to go, but I cannot keep the date straight, so when is it?
March twenty-sixth.
March twenty-sixth.
Tuesday night.
Tuesday night. It's going to be a great tricky tray, so I encourage everyone to go to that one and all the other ones that are coming up.
Yeah, it's a good point. We've been trying to encourage all of our board members, and I, I know it gets a little pricey, and, and I, I know citizens don't realize that all the tricky trays and all the affairs come out of our pocket. This is not a paid position, and, and our, our campaign funds don't go very far by the time you get done paying for all your signs and everything else, so the tricky trays pretty much come out of our own pocket. So I appreciate us all trying to, to get there as often as we can. Any other old business? Under new business, and, and I'm sorry that some of our teachers left, I, I was very, very upset to hear the passing of Rose DiGronimo. I worked with Rose when I was on the board the last time, she was the principal at Washington School, outstanding principal, outstanding educator, a real good friend, and, and I love Rose, so I don't mind joking about Rose, because we always did. I used to tell Rose she could, she could deal with the children better than anybody else, because she was the same size as the children in Washington. And she loved it, and she was an excellent educator, and I surely am going to miss her. Also, this week, one of our outstanding ballplayers and, and coaches, Ron Fraser passed away. Ron Fraser, Fraser was back in my day, I think he was back in nineteen fifty-two, from when I'm looking at the papers, when he, when he was a pitcher for our, our ball team. But the better part of Ron Fraser was that when he left Nutley High School, he went on to be the athletic director at, at the University of Miami, and I know our children would go down there throughout the season, and he would bring them down there in the baseball team, and train them, and, and play, play as college guys against our Nutley baseball team, and, and made them better men, or women, for what that, for what it was. And I, again, I worked with, his brother was a fireman in Nutley, and his nephew was a fireman in Nutley, and Ron was a, a great man, and I'm, again, don't need this. Any other new business? Motion to adjourn?
No.
I'm sorry.